Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Good morning, everybody.
Morning.
Mike? Is your mic on down there, everybody?
Okay, gonna get a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
First, and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Pardon, who was the second? It was very quiet.
Dave. Dave was first, Bruce was second.
Yeah, okay.
Approve the minutes from December eighteenth.
I'll make the motion.
And the claims on the twelve eighteen.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of December eighteenth and a motion to approve the claims after that.
I'd second that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. General public concerns. Seeing none.
I would, I'm just gonna remind, uh, I start jury duty this morning, so every Monday, I'm on jury duty for the next three months, so if I'm not here, I may be upstairs, I'll let Carl know on Sunday night if they have something going on, January through March, I'm on jury duty, so FYI.
I hope you don't.
I flew the coop, I'm...
Hope you don't have to.
I hope so, too.
Alright, so we do go down and appoint chairman and vice chair of the board?
I think you're doing good, we can just stay this way.
Ah, let's get her done.
It's very quiet.
Yes.
Well, we made a motion to do this.
Yeah, we made a motion.
I would guess as per protocol, I'd make a motion to appoint Bruce Reimer as the chairman for this year, and along with Carl Mattis as the vice chairman for two thousand eighteen.
Okay, I have a motion.
Yeah, a second?
Yeah, a second, by Dave, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Sounds like you are now the chairman, Bruce, and I'll let you take over the meeting.
I was hoping that we didn't get a second, so that we could just move back where we were. Cause I didn't sleep very well last night, hoping I didn't do this wrong.
Oh, your vice chairmanship this past year was stellar, so we have no doubt that you're gonna find out.
I feel much better, I'm breathing easier.
We'll keep you on a straight narrative.
I hope so.
Remember Peggy's sitting by, Ed?
Peggy, she elbows me, I know I'm going the wrong direction, so... Are we going to, uh, go to the Jeff Riles with Jenna?
Sounds like a good idea.
Okay, Jenna?
Every so often I go check county health tax bill certificate and joining property owners to see if they're interested in acquiring our county health certificate. In this case, property in Livermore, um, the owner, Jeff Riles, has, is adjacent to these two parcels, and he is interested in acquiring them through tax sale deed, so we are asking approval of the board to the county health tax bill certificate or the two parcels to him, paying the back tax and that drainage, or the years to two thousand twelve through two thousand fifteen, which is about, is the seven ninety-eight seventy-eight, and then away the penalty and interest on the tax, delinquent taxes and drainage.
So you said that's for two properties?
Two parcels, yeah.
Taxes is seven ninety-eight seventy-eight?
Yes.
And the penalties and interest is three ninety-two sixty-eight?
Yes.
Ten dollars seventy.
Yes, that he paid that, the penalty on each of them.
Basically, those numbers listed, that would get in those parcels?
It would get in this tax sale certificate, and then there's a ninety day write a redemption form he has to mail to any individual that has an interest in the property.
Right.
And then after that ninety days is over, he would have a free and clear tax sale deed.
I have a question for you.
Sure.
So, the original owners, do they just pay him, they don't have to worry about the fees and the interest and fees?
If the owners don't want him to own ownership, they would come in and pay all the delinquent taxes to him, and then we would reimburse him, and then they'd also pay us all the penalties.
That's alright, that was my question, okay.
We don't let the owner off.
That's a question.
Yes.
Okay, so he'd have to pay this to get the certificate?
Yes.
And then after the ninety days, if something takes place in the ninety days and they say, yes, we will come in and take care of it, he gets reimbursed what he's paid.
What he's paid.
And then they, then they got everything squared away.
And then it's back to the one.
That's, I mean, as per, all these things are like...
Yes, all the tax sales certificates.
So what do, I mean, I just, oh, go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve the sale of tax sale certificates.
You have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, so any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carries.
Open, thank you.
Thank you. We're way ahead here, nine o'clock, we go to the drainage, so, do you wanna start on the list of, how do you wanna do this thing? Or do you wanna do the, just top, start at the top then?
Mm-hmm, yep, and then that's your...
Back to the very forward, is that the sheet that we have?
Right, and I didn't make copies for you, I don't think, so I will run and make some, oh...
Oh, you sent copies, I had last year's.
I wasn't sure if you guys could copy them up or not.
I didn't, I didn't.
But not a problem, I can, not a problem, I can make copies.
You know, I might need a copy.
Here, look at this one.
Two or three people, or just two?
I can look on here.
Yeah, if we have any, yeah, we'll save some, save some paper. No, if we need something, we'll, we'll get it.
I think there's only one new one.
New board entirely?
I think there's, um, Peggy sent me something, there's a new one out, but we have to put somebody on.
We don't need any more of these extra critical boards, I've come to find out, but...
God, no.
A great deal of them, we could do away with. Well, this one, I'm on, it's, anybody could be on it. I don't even go to the meetings, be honest with you. It's, you aren't gonna do anything. This one, though, you've gotta have the representation.
Mm-hmm.
The D cap one, you gotta have the representation. Cause they gotta have the supervisor, you know, blah, 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 so... Yeah, but some of these are just, there's too much. I always think the landfill one, you're one old, I mean, that's important, cause you gotta keep going through that.
You gotta keep running. You gotta keep... That's down to four dots.
Uh, we gotta keep, yep, appreciate you doing that, that's, there you are.
Okay, how do we do this, Peggy, do we just start down the list? We've already got the chair and the vice chair.
Yep, so you don't have to do that. Um, then it would be to the part where we say the newspaper.
Or to the newspaper, and that's the Humboldt?
Independent.
Independent. Do we have to do these individually, or how?
Yeah, I think we do, I'll, I'll make a motion to designate the Humboldt Independent for official county newspaper.
Is there a second?
Second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carries. Um, let's see, uh, where are we at then?
Then the mileage rate for county employees?
What are you?
Where are we right now?
We're at fifty cents.
Yeah, we're at fifty cents, and that's below what the IRS is, but...
What's the IRS number, do you have, I mean?
Fifty, five, I think, or fifty...
It came down a little bit.
Yeah, fifty-five point four is what it was, I guess I didn't look up.
I think we can live on fifty cents, I'd move that we leave at fifty cents a mile.
Okay, there's a motion for fifty and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carries. Alright, uh, rate for meal reimbursement for county employees attending school, daily rate of forty dollars for fiscal year.
I'll make a motion to keep that at forty, I think it's adequate.
There's a motion of forty and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carries. Alright, then we're to the different boards, advisory board for the mental health, is that Eric?
Yeah, I'll stay on that.
Eric, we'll stay on that. Um, bill pay, payers, that is me, I guess I've never done any of that, so I'm assuming I'm doing a good job.
Okay.
Done, awesome.
And if you're not doing anything on that, then we can crush you off, too.
Well, I've never...
But that was one we added last year.
Okay, well, since I did a bang up job, I'll just stay right with you.
Okay.
Uh, the board of health is David.
I can stay on that.
Good. Alright, building families, uh, is Eric?
Austin, stay on that.
Eagle Grove and Clarion, I mean.
Yep.
Central Iowa Juvenile Detention is myself and Dave is the alternate, I will stay with that.
I too.
Um, the community family resources, um, I'd probably get yelled at if I jumped ship now.
They would now.
Uh, so I'll stay with that, uh, concerned citizens, Eric?
Uh, yep, they're still concerned, so...
Alright, um, the daycare advisory board, Carl?
Probably don't have any choice.
There you go, so development, uh, human service governing board, Eric?
I'm fine with that.
Decategorization?
Yeah, I'll stay on that, cause I'm just barely getting the gist, but that is the most confusing board I've ever been on in my life, but I'll keep, I like the, the challenge of it.
Electronic transmission clearinghouse, Carl?
Yep, stay with that.
Enterprise zone commission, Rick and myself?
Yep.
I guess, yep. Uh, executive minus board, Dave?
Unless somebody wants it, yeah.
Oh, thank you for doing that.
Everybody's jumping at it.
Thank you for doing that.
Uh, the HIPAA?
I think it's required, I don't think we've done anything, but better leave me on there.
Uh, homeward housing trust fund, uh, Rick?
Stay on that.
Uh, Humboldt County?
Rick, do we both get appointed at somehow?
We are both.
I think we both got stuck with that.
You wanna put Carl on your shoes?
I'm with that.
Perfect, we love volunteers.
Sometimes we'll meet twice a month, sometimes like, yeah.
Really?
Three months without doing anything.
The Humboldt County advia, advisory board, Edmo, that's myself, I'm, I'll stay with that. Humboldt County Development Association is Rick?
Yeah, I'll stay on there.
Uh, nine one one service board is?
The chairman usually.
Yep, so that would be you.
So it looks like I got that.
Good idea.
Okay. Someone will have to let me know when and how, where.
You have many meetings with that?
I don't schedule those.
You might have four, four a year, maybe.
I'm always looking for an extra meeting, doesn't it? Humboldt County Emergency Management Commission?
That's always been the chairman until this year, somehow, I'm not sure, it shouldn't be the chairman.
I really think it should be the chairman, too.
I think that you guys are liking it.
You guys took the appointment, yeah.
Sure, why not, Reimers?
I mean, I was on it, and then all of a sudden they put Carl on it, I don't know why it got changed, but I think the chairman should...
Yeah, and it shouldn't, because you...
Well, I don't wanna make anybody mad, so I'm gonna jump on that one, too. Uh, Humboldt County Housing Development Board, Carl and Rick?
Yep.
Landfill commission, Rick and Bruce?
Good.
You still good with that, Rick?
Yep, that's fine.
I guess I am.
Starting to really understand that finally, after four years.
Yeah, well, don't quit now, then, just keep, keep up the good work.
Humboldt County Social Services, Dave and Carl?
Yeah, don't know what it is, never been on it.
I would, Carl, are you good at that, too, then?
Not a problem.
Alright, Iowa Drainage District Association, Rick?
Yeah, I'll stay there.
I have a government, uh, health plan, that was supposed to been the chair, but Rick made a motion, or didn't make a motion, he made an, uh, recommendation last year. And I guess we're, are we all with that?
Yeah, I'll stay on that, because otherwise you're just lost.
But, yeah.
Good.
So...
So I'll just flip the names up to you.
You're attending that meeting then in a couple of weeks?
Yep.
That'll be in Des Moines?
Yep, and you can, you're more than welcome to go with, too, so we have two, two eyes and ears there.
Well, I'll keep that in my book, then.
With four eyes and four ears.
Uh, Iowa State Association for Counties Board, Carl?
I'll stay there.
Iowa State Association, uh, County Supervisor Executive Board, Carl?
One more year of that.
Iowa State Association Supervisor Ledges Flight Committee, Carl?
I don't think I want that anymore.
Okay. It's usually like a one-year term.
Yeah, I think I'm off of that.
So, who's looking for some help?
I got, another we have to add to me, though, that one that Jerry passed to me, CSS?
Oh, County Social Services.
County Social Services. And I'll be glad to pass that to somebody else, but I think it should be a little continuity, probably.
Yeah. So, we better take care of this other one before we pass another one. Anybody interested?
Which one?
This is the supervisors, let's just say, committee, is that what we're doing?
Um, that's appointed by the...
Nope, that's appointed by, yeah.
ISHAC.
Oh, okay, so we don't have everybody?
There may not be someone from our county, so...
Okay.
Alright.
That's what I was talking about.
Okay. We'll lay low, then. LAC Joint Law Enforcement Board, Rick and Eric, you're still on that?
Fine with that.
Uh, LACPC, whatever that is?
I'm not sure, but I'm fine with that, too.
Um, Ministerial Hunger Task Force, I'm still on that, and I might get yelled at and have all the ministers mad if I jump ship. North Central Iowa Regional Landfill, Rick and Bruce?
Yeah, I'll stay there.
Okay, uh, hazmat team, uh, Dave and Bruce?
Yep.
Good.
Yep, I guess I'm on it, too.
Stunning, arresting.
Second Judicial Correctional Services, Carl and Eric?
Yep.
Fine with that, that's kind of a show up to it deal.
Okay, uh, Small Business Development Board, Carl?
We meet a couple of times a year, better stay there.
Okay, uh, Supported Employment Association Committee, Rick?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm on the Edmo board, so I'll stay there, Wellness Center Commission, Carl?
I didn't know anything about that.
I didn't know, did you?
That was something we added last year, so...
Well, I'd be taking up a lot of your time.
So if that's not something you want in here, we'll just cross it out.
Do we have to have it?
Well, at one time, didn't we talk about...
We'll probably move more in that direction once we get this facility, you know, then we might have, maybe we should leave it on for now.
Just at least keep the board...
If something happens?
Yeah. Workforce Development, David?
I've kindly figured out some of it, yeah, I'll stay on it. Unless somebody wants it, Carl's tired.
Then it'll take a motion and a second for that whole group.
I'll make a motion to approve all the nominations for these board.
We have a motion from Rick?
Second.
Second from Dave?
Before you go further, I forgot to ask you guys, was there any others that we needed to add that were new ones?
You sent me something, what was it?
I don't remember right now.
Oh, trying to think of what it was.
I got an email from you.
I was gonna say, I thought I read something, too, but I don't know if I can find it, or if I can click it now.
Uh, it was, um, it's come to me. Not for a while.
Okay, we can always have it out later.
We'll look it up on the computer, we'll figure it.
Yep.
So we have a motion and a second for all of the names to be put in the places that they were indicated, any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carries. Okay. What else do we have, we have any of these on the board down below for?
Yep. Authorized auditor to pay certain bills before formal board approval?
Um, first we have the chairman of the board and the auditor to the courthouse committee for calendar year two thousand eighteen.
I think that makes sense.
And then, and this is a whole group, so we'll have one motion for the whole group. Um, the person, we don't have a person up for veteran affairs this year, um, or at least I don't think so.
No, true.
Cause I think you were, the newest was just appointed, yeah. So Bob Mosher is up on the conservation board for a five-year term, um...
Bob Rashmussen goes off?
Yep. Dave Huntermark, um, would be the one for the zoning board for a five-year term, if you wanna renew these, these are the people whose terms would be up. Dave Lee is on the board of adjustment for a five-year term, um, I crossed off the I C T tack one.
Can you do that, I'm not talking, I don't take, can you serve both?
Yep.
Yeah, that's good.
We got the other stating back from the ISHAC family, good.
Great, go for it.
Okay, so the I C T tack I took off because Paul is no longer with us, I'm not sure if that's something that they will have been due or not, so, it's something to keep in mind as we go forward. Um, Cory Matson needs to be appointed to the Civil Service Commission for a six-year term, his term is up. And then Linda Lynch and Jerry Haverley are on the board of health, um, they have three-year terms. And then Cheryl Reed gets appointed to the Homeward Housing Trust Fund Committee.
So all these names have already been, they've been contacted, or they're aware?
No, these are ones that are up, that were, their terms expired at the end of seventeen. So if you want to reappoint them, you can, if you want somebody different in there, you can, this is the time to make any changes, or leave them as they are, or whatever you wanna do.
So what's the wishes?
They're willing, stay as, leave them the same.
Yeah. And we do send letters out to all these people, so if they decide they do not wanna serve?
Then we have to fill some...
They'll call me, or they'll send it back, or...
Well, right now, you don't know if anyone whose term is up has declined to serve another term.
Mm-mm, we've never contacted them ahead of time.
But you will, and then I guess if they, if they refuse, or say no, then we'll have to get someone appointed.
Right.
Okay.
Right.
What was the one, Dave Huntermark, who signed to this?
Um, he was on the...
Zoning and board?
Yep.
Zoning?
For a five-year term.
Well, I'll make a motion to nominate all these people for these various boards and commissions.
We have a motion from Rick and a second from Dave, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carries. I just noticed that Santa shaved his beard.
My god, yeah. You'll have your mother's...
I didn't wanna, I should tell you that, I'll, maybe some kids are watching this, I'm not sure, but, sorry about that.
I, I was told Santa went north, so...
Yeah.
Or south?
Yep.
Okay, I just... I'm not completely sleeping, I just happened to notice that, Dave. Okay, so we go to, uh, where are we at now?
I wasn't sure what you wanted to do with the county weed commissioner, we used to have Paul do that.
Well, I don't know if Ben has a certification?
For chemicals.
See, I didn't know what to do with it.
All we can ask is, he's on the agenda, now you...
We'll, we'll have to ask, I don't think he does.
Do you wanna hold off on that one?
Yeah, we better hold off on that.
Then you're down to authorizing the auditor.
Okay, we're authorized the auditor to be, to pay bills when the board is not in session, kinda like we did the other night, or the other day.
Yep, yep, and there are times that you'll have a bill come in that has to be paid today, and that gives me the authority to sign off on it until you guys have a chance to look at it. Anything that's over five, ten thousand dollars, I'll usually have you guys sign it anyway, I'll call the chairman and have the chairman come in, because I just don't feel like this falls within that realm, to me, this is things like telephone bills that are gonna need a due date, or a credit card, that if you don't get it paid, you're gonna get a late fee. Things like that, that have to be paid right away.
I'll make that motion.
So we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any other discussion? Do we know, do you want, you're good with just, uh, two names, or you don't want two out of the, three out of the five, or what? You good with the way we've done it? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carries. Salaries and payroll for previous approved by the board?
And that's all within that same category?
Insurance payments and unemployment quarterly reports. And emergency expense deemed necessary by the county auditor. That's all in that group?
It's all covered by that, yeah.
Okay, we don't have that, or do we have the resolution?
Yep, and this is how it will appear, just like that.
So, we need to read that whole resolution?
I could.
Okay, go ahead, you wanna?
Two thousand eighteen dash one, be resolved by the Board of Supervisors of Humboldt County, Iowa, that Ben Luth, the interim county engineer of Humboldt County, Iowa, be and is hereby designated, authorized, and empowered on behalf of the Board of Supervisors of said county to execute the certification of completion of work and final acceptance thereof in accordance with plans and specifications in connection with all farm-to-market and federal or state aid construction projects in this county, dated at Dakota City, Iowa, the second day of January, two thousand eighteen. Now, we did one like this when you appointed Ben the interim engineer, but that's only effective until your appointments again, so, yeah, that's why it's here again.
I move a few regulations, two thousand dash one.
Motion by Carl, is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And I'll have a formal one for you to sign after that.
Okay. Now, a resolution, two thousand eighteen dash two?
And this one says where, as certain roads in the secondary road system of Humboldt County, Iowa, are programmed for construction work during the year of two thousand eighteen, and whereas emergency maintenance repair work and bridge repair work may be necessary during the year of two thousand eighteen, now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Supervisors of Humboldt County, Iowa, that the interim county engineer be and is hereby authorized to close such roads as necessary, and erect the proper closing signs. This action is taken to protect the traveling public, dated at Dakota City, Iowa, the second day of January, two thousand eighteen. This also was one that you did when you appointed Ben, and so now it's time to reappoint. Mm-hmm.
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution twenty eighteen dash two.
A motion, is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
A motion and a second, any other discussion? All those in favor of twenty eighteen dash two, say aye?
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carries. Uh, how about twenty eighteen dash three?
This one is your master matrix, the only thing that changes in the wording is the dates. Um, it'll be for February one, two thousand eighteen, through January thirty-first, two thousand nineteen.
Okay, I'll make the motion for resolution twenty eighteen dash three for Master Matrix.
You got a motion, is there a second? Motion and a second, any other discussion?
Well, you just, like it's just dumped on you.
Well, if we don't approve this, we have no say so.
Yeah, we have no say so, we have to...
And with it, we have very little say so.
True.
And I'd just like to make note of that.
Well, unfortunately, until it changes in Des Moines, that, that's the cards you dealt, so...
I know it, but it's a bad hand, it's a bad hand.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carries.
Now you have a choice, it's nine o'clock, you can either go to drainage, or you can continue on and finish it, thank you.
We got much left here?
I'll do that, well...
Well, is this, uh, joint with Humboldt and Wright, is that, we don't have, we aren't calling them, are we?
No, I don't believe so.
It's just, and it don't look like we have a whole lot for drainage, do you wanna jump over and do that, or you wanna push them back a little bit?
I think we should see if we can just wrap up the protocols here.
Well, let's keep plugging away, then.
Yeah, I don't, it won't take long.
It won't take long. Alright, um, blanking following members of the eminent domain board, did we get, we get them all filled last year, now we gotta reappoint them?
Yeah, we did, mm-hmm, hopefully they'll all stay.
Yes.
So do we have to read through all of those?
That's up to you.
I don't think so.
Want them to be or not.
I might call your attention down to real estate, we have three guys on there, and they all dropped out. Larry Curran, Darrell Rusher, and Mike Worthington no longer have real estate license.
Larry Curran, Darrell Rusher, and Mike Worthington?
Right.
Okay.
Larry, Darrell, so we need...
Hey, Mr. Chairman, I've read, I did a little homework, there's who might be eligible.
You are always on the ball, is your name on there?
I don't, yeah, but I can't do it.
Okay.
There might be some people we can contact and see if they'd be wanting to serve.
Alright, well, I talked with Kevin last year, to, maybe I'll call him and see what...
Kevin Scow?
Yeah.
He's already on.
Oh, I know he's already on, but his wife is also on, I don't know if that wouldn't be a conflict, would it? Means they're both, they're both working at a Realtor, and we can call, uh, any of the other ones who are interested also. So, if you're happy with the names, and we'll try to add to the real estate, uh, list to give them three new, a couple new names, anyway, I'd entertain a motion.[1770.12]
I'll make the motion to approve the current people on the list.
For the eminent domain board?
The eminent domain board.
And it's printed?
Yep.
Their motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any other discussion?
So, we're going to contact, we need to have contact three real estate salespersons or brokers then? That's part of the.
They have to have their license, right, Carl?
I don't know for sure.
Yeah.
It says salesman or broker, so it'll be one or the other. And there's a list of about twenty people there you choose from.
Right.
And these people also get a letter from our office stating that the Board of Supervisors appointed you on this date, so if for some reason they can't serve, or don't want to serve anymore, they can get back in touch with us and let us know.
Okay. Well, I'll try to call, uh, Smith Real Estate, Grokland, and, and see if Paul, or anybody else from Humboldt Realty would be interested. We'd like to keep the six.
They get a minimum.
Alman, Alman, might be.
Okay.
Possibly.
All right.
According to the code, we're supposed to have no less than seven in each category.
Okay.
So we'll have to replace them.
Need to make sure that that's filled, that's my point.
Yep.
I'll try to give them a call yet today. All right, we have a motion and a second. All those others and the three that have been struck. Close, or, I need a.
Vote?
Vote, yeah.
Yep.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All those same sign. Motion carries. Put that up here, sweetie. All right, um, policies, uh, what are we doing here?
The Personnel Policy Update Committee, which we need to meet, by the way. Um, the people that are normally on that are the county attorney, the county auditor, the county auditor's payroll deputy, the county recorder, county treasurer, the county sheriff, county engineer, safety director, conservation director, assessor, and the chairman of the board.
Okay.
I move that committee the same as indicated.
Here we have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor, or any other discussion before we vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those same sign. Motion carries.
Okay, you were through all your committees.
Perfect, excellent.
So are we going to try to set that up, Peggy?
Yeah, I'll see what, we can get it scheduled.
What was the one I saw? Wasn't there something coming up Wednesday?
Com, Conference Board?
Oh, the Com, the Conference Board.
Conference Board.
Yeah.
Does that, is that Wednesday or Thursday?
I think it's Thursday.
Wednesday, Thursday, I saw it.
Thursday, I believe. And is that?
I know it's coming up, I just couldn't remember.
Well, email said they requested elected officials to show up for that. I believe it's one o'clock Thursday.
That's what I thought. Wednesday, Thursday, I couldn't remember which.
One o'clock Thursday.
We didn't, we normally don't even have anybody show up for that, do we?
We could.
Yeah.
Sometimes there's been, yeah.
If somebody like to go.
Different members from the board, yeah.
That'd be a good, good thing for the chairman to attend.
Yeah, okay. I'm good with that.
Won't last long.
Uh-huh. Nothing ever lasts long.
I, as far as my scheduling, I do plan to, because it's not anything mandatory, because none of us are on that board, obviously, but they just request that elected officials.
Yeah, whatever it is. Okay, so we're a few minutes behind, but you want to make a motion, go to the drainage?
I'll make the motion, go to drainage, out of.
Give them.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those same sign. Motion carries, we're in drainage.
I will leave the camera on, and I'll go get the drainage.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Thursday at one o'clock?
Yeah.
Double check, but I believe that's right.
There's a agenda.
How's your drink holding up there, Bruce?
I have, if there's coffee ready, I'd have some.
Normally, that's probably a protein, that's probably a protein shake.
I had one of those on the way, while I was driving, I was looking for my phone. I had drank my protein shake.
You lost your home?
No, it slid out of my pillow pocket, went between seats, and I got up here and, you know, do the hand tap, and.
Yeah.
Carl, how's your coffee?
I've got plenty, thank you.
Right.
Mine's good.
Didn't even freeze on the way in.
Well, my water stays pretty, ice keeps staying a lot longer now, but my shirt's not heating up enough.
Hi, Bruce.
Hey, Mr. Chairman.
Hey. We're going to run a tight shift here now. I almost thought it was in trouble.
Oh, I, I saw you now.
I'm sorry. I can go home.
Be nice to me.
I can't find that. You had a coffee.
Here, here. Come on, boy, here you go.
It's going to take me a little time to adjust to this.
Yeah, it is.
It's going to take me a long time, about a year. Remember, I've been hitting it head a lot, so you're going to have to try and stuff over and over, you'll think. God, this place is just.
You're doing just fine.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I won't sleep at all on Sunday nights, just so you know.
Just one.
That's because I'm sitting next to.
That's because he is sitting next to you? You didn't bring, you were talking to.
I did.
Okay, we're in drainage. We have a.
He'll laugh when you hear they brought it.
Oh, I know.
Go ahead, that's, we're doing side conversations.
Yeah, go ahead.
All right, uh, we have a drainage district, three forty-seven Humboldt Wright County, approved by the pay estimate. Number three, De Nell's, De Nell's Peterson.
Uh, Rick Peterson, isn't it?
Richard Peterson.
Oh, just me.
Richard.
So is this the completion?
Uh, this is everything but the retainage, and what we'll ask you, from you is accepting this to pay, to pay, and then setting the completion hearing date. And we have prepared the final estimate also, but we're not paying that until after the completion.
So what is your, your figure is forty thousand nine eighty-five-ten?
Yep.
That's what you're asking for?
Yep.
Forty thousand what?
Nine hundred eighty-five point one zero.
Nine eighty-five-ten.
I picked it up somewhere. I was thinking about the retainage.
Is it hundred percent already?
And the retainage is ten percent of that, or ten percent would be eight thousand fifty-four-twenty.
And you've, you have a completion hearing scheduled for this eighty-six tile job there for, for the twenty-second of this month. Um, I said.
Eighty-six.
And the completion hearing only needs ten days' notice, so what Chris and I talked about before we came in was the possibility of having it the same day as the other completion hearing.
So we did that on at nine o'clock, right? The completion on six?
Dave, did you get that on?
Twenty-second of January.
Should I make a motion to pay the pay estimate number three?
That would be good. We have a motion from Rick, pay, pay estimate of forty thousand nine eighty-five-ten, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those same sign. Motion carries.
Do we need a motion since the completion hearing date?
Yes, that's what.
Well, as soon as I sign this.
I got a question for you, Rick. Did the Worthlands get that driveway extensions put on? I know I talked to Chris at one time, they, they were going to put up, they got the pipes delivered, and they were the wrong pipes, or something.
I, I don't know.
I mean, that has nothing to do with the district, though, because that is done at their cost, so it's.
Yeah, that's right. I, I don't know. Last I talked to them, they discovered the wrong, it was the wrong pipe. I don't know what happened after that.
Okay. But that'll be done privately, anyway?
Yes.
Okay.
And with the completion hearing, hopefully they are here, and you can ask them.
Yeah, okay.
Well, I have Chris or Marv's number, I can hold them also, make sure that they are here, or whatever.
Yeah.
If you have any questions.
Like Rick said, it's, it was theirs to take care of, and they're making arrangements to do it.
Yeah.
So you're good with the twenty-second at nine?
Nine fifteen.
Nine fifteen.
And that is, uh, which, where are we at?
Hearing for three forty-seven.
Okay. And, uh, you said Monday to twenty-second?
Yep.
You mentioned that.
Nine fifteen.
Nine fifteen, yeah, because number six is at nine.
Right.
So nine fifteen.
I moved, we set that hearing date at nine fifteen on December, January twenty-two.
We have a motion and a second from Dave. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the nine fifteen on the twenty-second, say aye.
Aye.
All those same sign. Nine fifteen it is. Got anything else, Rick?
Uh, let me.
Did we ever get any things set with, with Rasmussen's and Elpines? Are we still set for spring?
Yes, that's what I was going to say. They're set for first thing in the spring. Uh, I need to talk to the contractor on DD four, and just coordinate that for sure. We had talked to him at one time about it, but it's been quite a while, so.
Looks like this machine's going to sit there all winter.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, the cold snap, we put everything to, to stand still, so. But, yeah, everything, as far as I know, is ready for, for spring.
Everything was, everything was done over Thor.
Yep.
We went over, my wife and I went over there the other night. Everything looks like it's out of the fields, and.
Good, I haven't been over there for a while.
Even on the south? On that blacktop? I saw there were some pipes.
Well, there might be some pipes, but I think you got all of the equipment and stuff out of there before, I don't know.
Are they going to just pick those up, or how do they do that?
Yeah, they need to.
We did that over there by one twenty-five, it was like we had to almost threaten to go get them ourselves.
Yeah.
This is old pipe. Ditch bank stuff that they pulled out, that was laying along the side.
And they put it in Jackson stuff?
Mm-hmm. This is, yeah, the Thor clean out three.
She's talking something different.
Sorry.
They're talking number six, and you're talking number three.
Okay.
So.
Three's not done yet?
No.
We're not even close on sort of completion, uh, clean out on number three, are we?
Well, we're, we're very close.
They haven't cleaned up their pipe yet.
Right.
Right.
And we have some disagreement on what it was worth placing rock at the existing pipe, and going back and forth with Yurki a little bit on that.
Okay.
I talked to him last week, and I told him that, told him to get it resolved yet this week, or so.
Okay. Have we got, have we had other?
Yes. The, the.
Brandon Myers, I believe.
Brandon Myers.
He's got a work order to do that.
Yep, and you need to check so much as far as when you get to it, but, yep, it's arranged.
Good. Anything else? Now we're going to DD one twenty-five, uh, with Gary and Dave.
Anybody has the right to appeal basically any of your actions that affect their rights, so, new classification comes under that, so Gary does the right to appeal that, um, and that is heard at District Court then. I've been doing this since nineteen eighty-six. Fortunately, this is the first one we've ever had appealed, but, so the process is just, it's kind of, is unfamiliar to me, I only know what I've read.
Do we have to have like a motion to accept his appeal, is that it, or?
Well, do you want to speak?
Is that fine if we speak?
Sure, yes.
I'm an attorney for Gary, but my, I know some of your faces, I recognize you. Um, so I do know that Don Adler came and presented to the board November thirteenth, with his thoughts, and he had a letter that I think was provided then. Um, and we received the revised notes from Mr. Copper on December eighteenth. Um, and we do agree with the four bay calculation. Um, the only thing that we don't agree with is that, it just appears that the future main was not allocated to state cost share. So we think it's, it's way too high, because the state cost share was not taken off the total cost assessed. I do have a letter from Mr. Adler, if you want to provide me a look at, if you want to take a look at it.
Sure, if you have a copy of it, I'll take it.
Thank you. Well, Rick, you figured through this, and we refigured through.
Do you have a copy for Rick, too?
Yeah, yep. I'll just copy it for him.
Talking about that seventy-five.
Wasn't that already factored in, the cost share portion of it?
No, uh, because what we were looking at was what it would take to just put in a main to serve just his property. Uh, wasn't taking into account the ag drainage well. What would have to be done differently than I've got here is, where do you go with that ag drainage well for an outlet? And what route do you take? How do you come up with the costs? Um, some question as far as, uh, cost share money, um, it would have been an expensive project to close one ag well, so I don't know if that would have delayed the closing or not. Uh, there's some unknown facts there, that there's no way to know. So, yeah, I did not take it into account for those reasons.
Do you need to go the most direct route, get that percentage?
Uh, yes. They want you to go with the most economical project to drain that ag well, um, in order to close it, so. And I have not looked if you could cut across and get a shorter route, and how much deeper your cuts would be for that. Um, that's the kind of estimate we'd have to put together yet.
So, do you have anything else, or?
Um, no, I just said, the back three pages are Rick's notes, I'll keep providing them.
I'm trying to have a copy of that.
Like that, I mean, that's, the four bay, we, we agree with that calculation, it's just that future main, we think the seventy-five percent state cost share should be, we're taking into account on that total dollar amount, about twenty-seven thousand dollars. So it should equal a total of more around, total assessment of ten thousand nine fifty-four, If you ever take rounding.
Can we get that pulled off? Can we get that, send you, apply to that?
No, no.
No, well, that, no, it's already been applied to the project. He's just trying to figure it into his calculations. This is what he's figuring in. Wasn't the benefit commission looking at the levied amount, not the total cost of the project? They're looking at the twenty-five percent cost of the district.
Yes, they were looking at the levied amount. And how to deal that, how to distribute that.
Which already has the seventy-five percent cost share taken out of it.
Correct, that's what I'm getting at.
That's, that's kind of what we are basing our numbers off of.
Yes, yes.
How come, Rick, you figure one inch coefficient on this, say, the future tile down the road? Which, my person, I think that tile, the mine that's in there now will last as long as your new tile. Cause every tile you hit was clay and it was just like new tile yet. Like cement tile, my make twenty-four inch main is absolutely like the day you put in. But why do you take your inch when you come up with this figure of thirty-one thousand dollars?
Cause I figured that's what you'd want up there.
I don't need, I don't need inch coefficients there. With all the fall I have, I can get by with half inch coefficient. I can put that tile in, I can put that twelve inch tile in across that wood farm in one day with my own prop, twelve and twelve inch. Now, you've got thirty-one thousand dollars. That's way outlandish as far as I'm concerned. If you just had the hires done and do it like you're saying with inch coefficients, then you don't need inch across there with all the fall I've got.
Well, if you said twenty-four inch.
If you go with the same route you took, yeah, but I would follow the, down through the ground where the, my present tile is. I wouldn't go take the route you did, go twenty feet deep.
Well, the idea here is not to go twenty feet deep, but to, to build the same general route as we had, but just shallow. And that's how I came up with the slope.
We've got a lot of slope.
I mean.
Yeah. I think seven or six.
You have a twenty-four inch out there now?
That's another thing. Before this all started, I gave you all of my tile records. I've got this, twenty-four inches my dad put in. And if they would have just looked at these maps, and here's all the pattern tiles you get. If they would have just looked at them, right first day, they had my twenty-four inch main. If they'd have been ten feet farther to the west, they'd have missed the whole thing. And they took all my pattern tile and if they'd have studied the maps a little bit, but nobody would listen to me. And all you did was just throw these boards in.
It's just been one big. If you've got a twenty-four inch out there though, you must have like a two inch issue with that. Cause I, the maximum size I put in here to get a one inch was fifteen and a half.
Mine starts out of the twenty-four inch, my dad put that tile in, it's already in.
Yeah.
The old map. And you've avoided that so easily. And when you hit that right off of that, that's the same grade, so you have to have that in your tile.
But we have.
I told you to start with that. When you're so deep. Then you start putting pipe across forty foot area, which would never work. So then you put in the tile beside it.
His recommendations were to put a.
Both sides. And then they didn't find them all at the end of the block.
That's basically what he's got, he hasn't moved on.
Totally the same.
The one inch is because I felt that he had at least that with the tile system he put in for part of it.
And I still, I'm never gonna have to replace that tile in my life or my kid's life.
Could be true. Nor, I won't argue with that, cause it, it appears to be a good system.
Uh, and Gary, you're arguing the point whether you need a one inch or a half inch. If I would reduce that to a half inch coefficient, tile would probably be about a twenty percent cost savings. Cause that's what I've always noticed in all of our other projects when we go from one inch to half inch.
Yes.
Would that be a satisfactory reduction for you, twenty percent on that thirty-one thousand?
What I really want, I don't wanna go to the core down.
Uh, we don't either.
We don't either.
And then last thing we went, Rick Hopper was there, cause she got his fifty thousand engineering and attorney fees. It cost me fifty thousand just to get a tile underneath the road.
And that's foolish to waste or anything like that.
Yeah, anybody's money.
And all I'm asking for is Don Adler's figures, you go by them because you don't know it. But that boy knows what he's doing and you already increased that cost figure. I'm, all I'm asking is you use them as figures and, or done. Otherwise, we're going for it. That's just a joke.
Keep in mind, procedure is, um, not explained in the COVID at all. You put a hundred points on the land with the most benefit and you graduate it down. So, um, for every engineer that does a reclassification, it's a different approach, cause COVID allows it, so.
And I don't know why I mentioned that, why can't I pick a different engineer than Rick Hopper on that board that decides? It just doesn't make sense. I mean, there's a little conflict of interest here. I've been in the courtroom with him before and won the case. He's probably got a little bit of, and forgot that.
I wouldn't, I would stick up for Rick in this, for that statement, Gary. I don't think there's any vendettas here. Hopefully not on your part either.
You don't realize how long that went on and on and on.
Too long. Anytime you get into litigation and. Uh, sure. You can speak to that, it's, a, a lot of that's unfortunately, that we don't wanna bash lawyers, get rich over it. When you can resolve it otherwise.
Right, Eric, I'm really saying that, cause generally, I don't think the engineer that did the project should be involved in deciding. I'm not really saying just on this particular one, I'm saying on any project. I don't think the engineer that did the project should be involved.
The problem with that is they know the most about how it was installed and what the benefits are for the system. I think that's why it's nearly always the engineer that worked on the design and construction that has to reclass. Homogeneity, in a word, I guess.
I think we don't have the board able to decide on the engineer, we got all kinds of things happening. Everybody wants somebody different. I think we get into a real wild problem there. I, I understand where you come from, Gary, but I think the, the benefit committee and the board supervisors should have that authority to choose the engineer.
Well, yeah, I'm choosing the engineer, but I'm thinking of having outside engineer. He always gets his looking figures.
So you're saying twenty percent, Rick?
Well, you know, if we went from a one inch coefficient to a half inch, it'd be a twenty percent reduction.
It'd be twenty-four thousand nine hundred and sixty-three fifty-six. Probably thirty-one two oh four.
Yeah. I didn't do the math, but that's pretty close.
That's what I come up with, huh?
Somebody, so can we explain why the state cost share is seventy-five percent? Cause it's taken off the future main there?
What you'd need to design is a system that will just drain that ag drainage well. And then if you apply to the state, there's a chance you get the seventy-five percent cost share. There's just no guarantee is the problem. And this was just to search, uh, to go with a straight line.
Actually, this, what, if I, I sat in on that when you talked to the benefit commission. It was to drain the land from where the ridge was north.
Right.
So it really has nothing to do with draining ag wells. You figured the cost for draining everything from the, the ridge line north. So it has nothing to do with ag wells at all. That's why, this seventy-five percent doesn't have anything to do with that.
Right, that was used as a basis to figure the cost.
The value of that one inch main.
Reduction.
Yes.
So it was only used for.
It has nothing to do with ag wells.
No.
This didn't.
No, it was used as a basis for comparison, is that fair?
Yes.
As a design as a basis for comparison.
Just to serve from that, like you just said, that's a good summary, from where the break is in the natural drainage, um, north.
So what you're saying from the road, north?
Basically, yeah.
Yeah.
And you're saying I have to pay because of the lie?
Well, the, this was to see what it would have cost to put a main in for anything that, from the road north, basically.
But I had all my tile in, my main and everything in.
But the road doesn't allow for, you're not supposed to make any adjustments for existing tile. We will make adjustments as far as area served based on tiling. But those, there's not, that's not supposed to enter into benefit calculations. Cause everybody has the right pattern tile every acre they have if they want to. Some people won't spend a penny, well, you know, you, you're willing to spend money on the drainage. And that's why you have a system.
My tile system too, it was perfect and you have to really screw it up. I'm still the owner, I'm still have to go out there and do some re-tiling because of this thing. Being that they give us, me that's, part of it's because it was so wet when they went through.
Yeah.
And then, I mean, now, was I not supposed to get a piece of paper showing where all of this connection were made or?
Yes.
Or is it that?
I, I'll have to get it to you.
I don't think I got one on DD two yet.
Oh, I should have looked at that a long time ago. I will check on both of them, cause yeah, those, we provide that to the landowners and we give them, uh, drainage thing, uh, measurements where, where they are. Get them within a few feet of, of each connection.
Cause that's all geo-referenced, if you will, that's all.
No, no, and that's another thing. Denver underground, all he had was a little pad in his excavator roughly where he hit all my tile. And when we went back out to try and fix that up, even the head guy who was done there underground, it shouldn't be said. I mean, they should have had it right there to put it down to your home, spot where everything was. But no, he had a little pad he wrote and then they couldn't understand it, and they had ag well time. And Denver underground had that little.
Yeah, and that's part of the requirements. We can get GPS coordinates on it if we have the station where they connected it. Because we know that the stationing, that the route, uh, the route of the tile followed. So if they give us a station where it was connected, we can tell how deep the main was there and where it is within five feet cover. I don't know how, what happened with the guy, the operator.
Wow, that's a bad deal.
I'm sure he got raped over the coals by his boss.
So what do you want to, what do you want him to do here?
Well, I'd, I'd, I'd make a motion that we reduce it by twenty percent, going from one inch to half inch coefficient. If that's acceptable to Gary, uh, to drop the appeal, I'm, I'm willing to make the motion to drop it by twenty percent.
And bear in mind, what we're talking about is, uh, is a, put together is a comparison. This is all done, it's a cost comparison by Rick. And that's what you're talking about, reducing, and that cost comparison was figured at a one inch. To reduce that to half inch because of the lay of the land, so to speak.
Yeah, cause of the slope of the land, the elevation he has, uh, I'd be willing to, you know, negotiate that cost down by twenty percent.
Further reduce the assessment is what we're looking at.
So is that acceptable with you, Gary?
I got right at ten thousand dollars and Mr. Adler didn't know you were an engineer. We're getting down there, but we just gotta do a little better.
I have a couple of questions. Uh, just for reference, I was not on the Board of Trustees for drainage when this all started, so, but I certainly got up to speed. First of all, when, explain the four bay cost allocation. So explain the, the term four bay, to me please.
That's an engineering term for, uh, a settling basin ahead of a, of a detention pond.
That's the Dicky Pond.
Yes, yeah, where we're trying to get the prop, uh, residue and, and still.
Right, okay.
Into a smaller holding areas that, that's pleatable.
Yep.
Um, before it gets into the larger pond.
Okay, well, I understand the, the premise and how that, but I just, okay, this word four bay came up and we haven't really been using the word four bay.
Oh, I think it's unfamiliar.
That's part of it. The other thing too, this project as a, entire project was done to close ag drainage wells, correct?
Yes.
So somewhere through this whole procedure, which there's a lot of it. I mean, obviously, the landowners knew that this was going this direction before the project ever started, correct?
Yeah, correct.
As well as Gary would have been aware that this is where this project was, was going.
Yes.
Uh, so, and it was researched, it was, was there any land reclassified to speak of? Because the, the direction went to the north versus the south because of the cost savings of the project, right? I mean, that's why we have a slight concern here at this point in time, is where it went to, to drain and close the, the wells. But, so how did that all work as far as, you know, was it, stayed in a drainage district? Did we add on to a drainage district? How did that all come together, you know, to, to put this project together with the?
It was establishment of a new district.
It was?
It was, yes.
New number.
Yeah, with a new number, one twenty-five.
Okay.
That was planned for a different project in the past and it fell through, so one twenty-five ended up not being used, even though we have a one twenty-six. So it got assigned to number one twenty-five. And, and with that then, we looked at the watershed that drained into that, based on the proposed improvements.
Okay, so one twenty-five is a district unto itself because of the ag drainage well closures?
Yes, good summary.
And obviously, yes.
What I still wanna add is the landowners, the present landowners petitioned against it and they had enough signatures to stop it. But then in the middle of the street, the lawyers, your lawyers throw them, well, you gotta have all the sisters and the siblings clear down the line and the trusts and all that. Well, so then we lost, all the present landowners were against it because you can't believe what this is costing so big. It's unfeasible, it's way over two hundred thousand dollars, which is about down great some people. And this thing should have went the other way, I don't care if it would have cost more money, cause that's, all the water flows to the south, every bit of it. All this new tile is taken, it's, uh, intake of tile, water in the ground. All the surface water is going down.
I understand that, I've been.
Bringing water from one watershed into another, that's where I come into it. They're going across my ground just to get to a drainage, to the, to the river. And we fought it, but then they throw that at us, all these other siblings that didn't know anything about it. So then they got enough signatures to, to, and they did, include some ground. It's absolutely not gonna help them one day. Don Day will get, get bad on this. All of his surface water goes south.
And if the project would have went south, it would have gone probably three times higher than it would have been.
Easily.
And you know that, cause the.
Yeah, I mean, cause they had to go through to the line rock. But now you've got some other sink wells to pull and they're gonna probably go through to another drainage. And it's been added on. Can you use a second opinion on it in the get-go? I said that, Simon's family.
Well, no, my, my only disadvantage is I wasn't here when the project started. But as I begin to get up to speed on drainage business and code and law, uh, doubt that this is something that relevant to anybody through this project. I don't believe that the procedure involved allows that.
Correct. There's been, uh, Brokary fought, same situation, we're all geared up, and you know that. And they got theirs thrown out. The only thing they had to do was if there's any future maintenance on that tile, they have to help them. But they threw it out, but they didn't have to pay anything on the top. And that's where I'm at.
That project went through two other watersheds to find an outlet and then outlet it in the road ditch. I'm familiar with that because there was some concern from Humboldt County getting more water in the road ditch, uh, and what they might have to improve. That was the other project that went through two other watersheds to find it an outlet. So it's not uncommon to have to go through a watershed to get an outlet. As a matter of fact, you're gonna have a meeting this winter.
Yeah.
On that one with several ag wells out there yet. And the only outlet we can find is going through a drainage system to the river.
Mr. Chairman, I think we have a motion and a forward second, Rick, motion, and I think it's a good compromise. We can discuss it now.
Well, we have a motion and a second, so we have the authority to at least discuss it. And I'm just gonna, and put this input. I, along with Eric, I feel like I'm watching the end of the movie, it's just, you know, like Groundhog Day.
We do.
Going over and over and we weren't in.
No, we weren't at the.
And I'm not passing the buck for anything that happened before we got here, but I'm just, we're, we're trying to catch up to speed on what was, what took place. And I rely on Rick and Carl.
Well, I, I know where Gary's coming from, cause he got drug into this because the outlet was in his land.
Right.
And they had to go through his land and get drug into it.
Unfortunately, that's where his land was.
And I'm trying to look the best, the only other option I could look at Gary is, you said you could have put that main in yourself.
Well, I mean, we do.
Yeah, you do, cause you do that kind of work. So you could possibly look at some consideration for reduced cost because you do it yourself. You know, uh, I'd be acceptable with that, uh, because it's one of these bad deals where they gotta have an outlet. So they go through somebody's land who really doesn't need the tile at all, but by law, they're still part of the district.
But by law, you can't change it.
Yeah, and it's up to the board to set these things, we do have, we do have that discretion.
Right.
And that's all good discussion, we've had this discussion before as well. That there is this brand new system, it does go through Gary's property. And he does have as much right as everyone else on that system to hook into it. Some of his tile is hooked into it, so there is a very good usable system there. I mean, there's.
You just don't need it, Eric.
I know what, I know what, there's, and it's a rough deal. I mean, you brought up points, we've heard the drainage on any projects, uh, will say nothing to do with drainage wells. And it's in a drainage district and it goes through the procedure, uh, I don't know, anybody that knows anything about drainage, and most of you folks do, and Rick certainly does. I doubt there's ever been a project proposed that everybody's a hundred percent in favor of it. Because of the cost benefit, there's always something there that Gary brought up some good points and, and different ones, Rick could, we all could probably think of. And some of them they're dealing with this presently. There's people that, I, I don't see any better. There's people that, I don't see any reason for it. Well, but yet, on the flip side, it is there, it is for their use. They do have, you know, what we're trying to do is get this down to a reasonable assessment for Gary. We really don't want to see him, the Drainage District, the trustees, go to court over something and spend exponentially more money than what we're talking about trying to save here.
Would you just take and read those papers you got there and decide, take another reading, think it over a little bit? Because we're folks, but just, I just want to, I will go to court, there's no doubt about it. I used to take, see, the last time we did it, I got there, $50,000, it's a lot of money for you guys.
Gary, we've gone from $40,000 to $31,000 to $24,000. It costs you more than that to go to court.
I know that, but it's the idea, Paul, this, Gary's rights, rights and wrong.
Well, there's a motion.
We have a motion.
Vote that, can we preface that by saying, I don't know, vote on that with?
The only way to sort it out is if Rick rescinded his motion.
Well, I mean, or vote on the motion per further discussion past that motion passing. In that, I don't think, I mean, that's a fair motion. I think it's the right direction. I think it covers a lot of the conversation and thought process through all this. And then we've got that to work with.
For maybe another week we can negotiate.
We've got that, we've got that done. And then we can research it after that motion.
Yeah, that's fine.
Do you have all that? Because I'm-
Well, yeah, I understand what you're saying.
I think we're moving in the right direction.
Let's have a vote on this motion.
And then discuss it.
Yeah, and then, and then we can move it over while Gary think about it.
What we're talking about is reduction of that cost by 20 percent.
By 20 percent, going from the one inch to a half inch coefficient cost on that 12-inch main that we used as a figure to come up with the price.
So with the 20% reduction?
Yeah.
So that's still the motion?
Yep.
I second that motion. We don't have a second already.
And I'm not going to ask for more discussion?
No.
Okay.
You wouldn't second it before, right?
I think Carl had seconded it earlier.
Oh, Carl seconded it. Okay, we have the discussion, let's vote on it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign?
Aye.
Motion, Gary's. So now are you going to think about it for, or what are you?
Well, what about if we throw in the possibility, Gary, you can do that work yourself. We could probably get that down, that's 20 percent if you do the work, right?
I didn't figure out what the possibility is. I mean, we can plow in 12 inches and we can plow it in a day. It's just, I don't have any doubt, but I need to look at the options.
I doubt we need a motion on this, but I, just again, we've already mentioned it, that we've got that motion passed. We take a little bit of time for further discussion.
So what was that amount, Dave, that you read to me earlier?
24, 963, 56. That's what I got for 20 percent.
24, 963, 56.
Yep.
That's based on reducing that 31, 2 by 20 percent.
Yep. That's what I come up with.
Can we take some time to think about this? How much time are you proposing?
When you take some time to think, Trish is asking, how much time are you proposing?
Week should be enough, don't you think?
Yep.
Because the March date is coming. I want to get this levy.
Well, we have-
I can go ahead and levy it.
You can levy it without this being, okay.
We have our completion next week, or two and sub 5:11 at 9:00. So we do have drainage on the board ready for next week.
I think we can put that at this-
Do you want to discuss it?
Yeah, or, yeah, discussion or something, or whatever you want, however you want to put it.
Is that workable?
Will you read that letter?
Yes, absolutely.
All right, thank you, Gary.
Thank you.
Good night, Gary. It'll be about 9:30 then probably.
9:30, you think? 11:00 sub 5, how long will that take?
Three, four hours.
Probably.
Might as well be honest, Rick.
A little sarcastic there, but it's going to take some time.
Yeah, well, 9:45.
You got a cop that's going to bring a watch? Yeah.
Did I give you your paper back?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Gary.
Thank you.
Do you want to set it for 9:30? Do I give it some time? 9:45, 10, do I hear 11? I'm not an engineer.
I would do 9:30 because-
These other two are not anticipated.
It might be his schedule.
Time approximately.
9:30, is that what you wanted, Gary?
Sure, what do you want to call it now?
Continuation.
Wanted to be a-
Do you want 25?
25.
Appeal class.
Appeal?
Yeah, appeal of the classification.
125, appeal.
I will make that motion to go to, next Monday, the 8th, BD 125, appeal at 9:30.
We have a motion for 9:30 on the 8th for appeal of 125. Is there a second?
Second, that motion.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close, same sign? Well, Gary?
I'll be asking you to add another item on there to set the bid-dating date for BD 35 Branch C. But I just- This is on the 8th? Yeah, but I just assumed, I'd like to wait till Wednesday or Thursday, I'd be sure.
To make sure everything's ready?
Make sure that we're ready.
30, who?
BD 35 Branch C, Carlin Hansen and Zyl Erikson. We're working on finalizing the plans and specs on that as we speak.
Okay.
I promised them we'd get the letting in January, so I'm looking at January 29th, get letting. But I'll ask you to be setting that. Can you meet next week?
What's that?
I'll just be asking you to set the bid date officially next week when you meet.
Okay.
Anything else? If not, I don't understand the motion to get out of drainage. Or you got stuff to go, you done drawing? Well, you got papers going over here, I didn't know what. 9:30.
Please, I'll go to Eric and sign.
Oh, man.
Get those back.
Eric, yeah. To the district stuff.
Can I just make a suggestion? And it doesn't have to be immediately, and I just, going back through our information, Trish has been real good putting down work order, where we stand with work orders and where we stand with some of the various projects, because we do get things scheduled, of course, on the bigger projects. But I would hope that you could get us something here in the reasonable future, starting in this year, where the work orders stand on a lot of the tile repairs, so that we can keep up to speed on that and get things squared away by spring.
Sure.
Get that.
It's an update.
An update. If you get that to us here, you know, if time allows, but next couple of weeks.
Anything else for drainage? I'll make a motion to go out of drainage.
Got a motion, is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close, same sign, we're out of drainage. Thanks for your help, Trish.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much. Be a little colder before you leave, isn't it?
I went into work a little while yesterday morning just to catch up on things. The mother in the car hit 27 below zero temperature. Well, I'm coming down today, it hit 22 below.
Yeah, it was this morning when-
Bad drive.
God, that's ridiculous.
I was the coldest state in the nation right now. Colder than Alaska.
Yeah, I saw that on someone's weather channel somewhere. Yeah.
They said it's colder than the surface of Mars.
I heard that.
It's all an engineer's problem.
I know, in ten days, first in days.
I've already drank, because this one's going to be tomorrow.
We can't get breaks?
We can.
Well, I believe it, absolutely.
And all these people like the snow, throwing boiling water out in the air.
Yeah, I've never tried that.
Taking a short break?
Yeah, Carl's going to run down.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.